Five years ago. Green light.
Hi, good morning. We're about to start today's work session for June 27th, 2018. If we could start by standing for the pledge. Catherine, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Catherine. I just don't want you to step on that with your toe.
And we will start in one minute. Jody will be back in one second. She just went to check her computer.
Chuck it or check it.
I think it depends on what's downloading there. I just want to start with a couple of announcements. We have a train station cleanup that we talked about last time. That will take place on July 28th at 9:00 a.m. and just bring some gloves and help us clean up that train station. And then that evening, there's also a concert in Polonaise Park or Shakespeare in the Park.
Well, yeah, Greenport's bringing their Shakespeare in the Park. They normally do an East End arts property, but they're going to use the Pavilion this year. And they expect a nice turnout for that.
Do you know what time that takes place? It's an evening.
It's a seven o'clock show. It's about an hour and a half.
All right.
It's really well done, actually.
So we'll have a lot of things going on.
The town will provide the gloves. They've got a whole box of gloves. So we'll be down there with gloves. So just bring your hands and we'll put gloves on them.
Okay, very good.
I apologize. Ahead of time, I'm going to be away, so I can't be there, unfortunately. I'd like to be.
We'll leave you some plans to plan when you come back. Oh, we can actually put you on watering duty.
There you go. We have picker uppers too, so you don't have to use your hands.
And I asked for Pro Champs to be on the agenda today. And thank you, John, for getting it on the agenda. I think Pro Champs is going to be a great choice for the town of Riverhead to cut down on code enforcement and what they're required to do as far as houses that are taken over by banks, where the banks seem to let these houses fall into disrepair and the quality of life for the neighbors and the people that live in these neighborhoods where houses have been foreclosed upon. So I think it's a good code enforcement tool. There's no charge to Pro Champs. They'll take a look at all of our houses that are in foreclosure and they will contact the banks directly and get them to clean it up. So I think it's a great quality of life program. And I thank John for reaching out to them and putting together this webinar that we're going to be seeing shortly.
Oh, okay, because I see, yeah, is there Kevin Sidella that's here?
Yeah, I'm just going to call him in. They're actually, they're Florida based, so I'm just going to call him now. We'll be in contact. If you look at the screen you have up there, that's what his computer screen is. So he'll start explaining once I just dial him in.
Let me just finish with the other announcements, though. The North Fork Trolley, which will begin July 7th, we'll have some information up on the website about that. But this is an exciting event. It will actually be all summer long. It's a trolley that will be running through Riverhead and then connecting through the whole East End. It'll run on every Saturday throughout the summer. It's free transportation and you can, it will stop at different venues, whether it's wineries or the aquarium. So it's very exciting to see that happen this summer.
Who's doing that?
That's with North Fork Trolley. That's done.
East End Tourism.
East End Tourism.
Is it just East End Tourism?
I know Suffolk County is partnering with them as well.
That's through that grant, I think.
Yeah, there's a couple of agencies. They did it last year. They had a smaller amount of money last year. They did it as a pilot program. They were able to expand it this summer. I don't believe last summer they had any or very little stops in Riverhead. And this go around, we will have a lot of routes and stops in Riverhead to enjoy what we have here in Oregon.
They're looking to start at the railroad station, right, as a pickup point to get people to use the train out.
Yep, and then perhaps that will address.
Traffic, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be very exciting. And we do have some details, but we'll put them up on the town website as soon as we have more of the details, which should be soon. The other thing is we, the CD collection boxes are up. We had spoken about that for Arts in the Park at the last work session. So we have a box in town hall. So if you have those used CDs from whatever ever era you listen to music.
Thanks for reminding me. I got.
Now, you know, a couple of your old Jethro Tull there, Mr. Wooten.
I can put all those in office. Oh, no, I still listen to those, but no, I'll bring them Patty Smith and Kate, 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 whatever her name is.
Kate, yeah, so.
Who's that, Kate?
What were you, a B-?
Kate Smith.
Okay. So that box is here and anything you could donate would be greatly appreciated. So now we will turn over to our agenda. So we do have the PSEG presentation, which we will do in a few minutes. So we're going to start with the Pro Champ property registration webinar, which will help with our code enforcement and free up some of their time so that we will be able to continue to enforce the codes that are in town. So, are you all ready?
Hey, Kevin, are you there? Hey, Kevin, how are you?
I'm good, sir. How are you today?
Good. I have you on with the board. We have your webinar up for them to look at. So you are ready to go.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for giving me some of your time. I will try to keep it as brief as possible. And first of all, I'll start off by explaining, my name's Kevin Sidella. I work for a company called Pro Champs. We manage property registration solutions for 200 different municipalities around the nation. Many of whom are located in the state of New York. What we do is we focus on properties that are at risk of becoming a source of neighborhood life, foreclosures, vacant properties, and rental properties. What brings us to Riverhead is the number of foreclosures you have. You have a high concentration of foreclosures, which is the case of all the municipalities located in your county. You'll see the map on the screen. This is kind of a snapshot of what we're seeing right now as far as foreclosure activity goes in your town. There are about 2,000 different municipalities around the nation that have some form of property registration program. Most of the programs are run internally and they are purely reactive, meaning you get the registrations from those who are conscientious, but there's not a proactive feature to it. Partnering with our company makes it proactive. We essentially don't make money unless we're getting properties registered. We're a very unique vendor to a municipality and that will never send you a bill. We only send you checks. So it's a completely free program. Won't cost you a dime to implement it. It's revenue enhancing. You'll get money out of the registration. But most importantly, the main reason people do it is we put you in direct contact with responsible parties at these foreclosed properties. And foreclosures are, they're a sore on the side of code enforcement efforts. When the grass gets two feet tall and the windows are busted out, there's some kind of code violation. That's parcel. It's hard for code enforcement officers to identify someone who can be held accountable for the maintenance on the property while it's within foreclosure. That's what we do. We build a database at our expense. We'll train your staff on how to use it. And it works really well. It's an interactive cloud-based communications tool. Before I go any further, though, I said a lot and I said it fast. Are there any questions?
The one question I have is, so then you are sort of the go-between between our code enforcement and the entity that is managing the property? Or that would be from our code enforcement directly to the entity?
Well, that's a really good question. And what we do is we register the property. We get the foreclosing entity to give us the name of a responsible party, contact information. We load that into our database and you use our database to communicate directly with those responsible parties. And if they're unresponsive, we absolutely serve as a go-between. We do that every day for all of our municipalities. But we're pretty good at this. We've been doing it for 10 years. We've registered almost a million properties nationwide at that time. We registered 108,000 last calendar year alone. And I'm going to show you a neighboring, our nearby municipality that's using our software so you can kind of get a feel for exactly what Riverhead would get if you went forward with this.
Is that the town of Babylon? Because I have a copy of their legislation here for the board members to see. Just make.
Yes, ma'am. We partnered with the town of Babylon, the village of Babylon. And we're, hopefully, knock on wood, starting in Hempstead soon, we're responding to an RFP on Friday.
So mostly, when the properties are foreclosed on, then it's usually a bank that you, that is, you'd be dealing with at that point?
Yeah, I mean, there's, we've successfully registered about four, we've registered properties through about 4,000 different foreclosing entities. We say foreclosing entities because they're not always banks.
Okay.
Right, and a lot of these are not recorded and it takes a while to figure out who's actually in control of the property, which is, I think, the biggest benefit to your service because, you know, quick claim deeds are given and deeds are transferred and properties are sold while the banks are still going through the foreclosure process and you don't know who has control of the property. And it really is a task to try and find out.
And it's time-consuming for our code enforcement to try to track it down.
Absolutely. And we, you know, do have a lot of complaints of neighbors with vacancies and quality of life in neighborhoods where houses are just abandoned and left to go to seed. So, yeah, I think you offer a great service. I was very happy to hear about it.
We sort of place your lots of homes for your staff so that they can get to the direct point of contact at a much faster pace. Whereas right now, they're probably spending a lot of time just trying to figure out who can be held accountable. And another huge problem, I've said this before, I'll say it again. They said a lot of these properties are treated by mortgage servicers, by banks. A lot like an 11-year-old would treat baseball cards. They're traded back and forth. So just because one month it was registered by one foreclosing entity, six months later, it could be completely different, a different property manager, everything. So that's why the legislation that you have for Babylon would serve you best. It's a semi-annual registration, meaning twice a year we're going back to those properties to check to see if it's still in a state of foreclosure and who the responsible party is.
And as it switches hands, does each new entity have to pay a registration fee? Or is it a one-time fee located with the property itself?
That's another great question. What we recommend to communities is acquiring a semi-annual registration. So every six months, we're going back there and checking to see who's the responsible party, who's the foreclosing entity, which bank has control of it now. Because they take hands with such frequency, we really found that out in Babylon. We started in March of 2017 with an annual property registration requirement for the foreclosures. And what we found is, you know, their code enforcement, we would register the property in January and I'm creating a high technical situation, but we registered the property in January. Code enforcement would get a phone call about it until October. But when they went into the database to communicate with the responsible party, they would find out that if the bank had changed, the property servicing company had changed. So the information that was contained in our database was essentially useless to them on a lot of parts, but not everyone. They're not all changing hands multiple times a year, but a lot of them are. And that's really why we recommend that semi-annual registration. So we're staying on top of all of these properties.
And that's how you make your money and that's how you can offer the service to the town for free. You claim your funds through the registration fees and then this program is completely free to the town.
Correct. And it's actually revenue enhancing. And what I would recommend you do is you can set your fee at anything that you'd like. If you're prerogative, we don't recommend that you go higher than $500 a property because that's really when some of the foreclosing entities will give you pushback. But if you set your fee at say $300 a registration, we only keep $100 of each registration that we collect. So the other $200 would get repaid back to the town every 30 days.
I like this program even better.
Yes. Okay, Kevin, thank you. If you want to continue.
So the map on your screen, what we've done in anticipation of this call is kind of mapped out exactly where we're seeing foreclosure activity in Riverhead. There's two numbers in the upper left-hand corner of the screen. The first number, 345, those are represented by the red dots on the screen. And I'll zoom in closer. Those circles will become individual parcels as we get closer. That's 345. Those are properties that I know are in a state of foreclosure in Riverhead. I know we could get those registered if we managed a property registration program for you. The second number, 106, that's represented by the yellow dot on the screen. Those are potential foreclosures. They're foreclosures that were taken in the last or were filed with Suffolk County in the last two years that have been sold in that same timeframe. So it would be our job to kind of go in there and see if it was just sold to another bank or was it sold to an individual property owner. If it was sold to an individual property owner, we wouldn't register. Just let it go. But if it's sold to a bank, we would obviously seek registration, create a, we call them obligations to register. We find and what we found in New York, particularly on Long Island, is that communities that we're working with, it's about 40% of that second number are actual foreclosures. So with all of that said, my professional estimate is you've got about 387 active bank foreclosures townwide right now. So I would put the ball here. A lot of what we do is dependent upon economic forces. But I would say the town would see revenue enhancements of between $50,000 and $100,000 a year on our program.
And is this just residential or residential and commercial?
It's both.
Okay.
And another question that I have for you is can you distinguish between a bank or a real estate office? Because we're, I'm being told by our assessor's office that a lot of real estate companies are buying up these foreclosures and then listing them as rental properties. I'm just wondering if you, if there was a way to give us account for those properties also that are being bought up by investors rather than first-time home buyers or home buyers?
Well, it's not something I could do right now. If we managed the program for you, we would definitely be able to tell those properties. We register properties across the state of New York every day that are REO, that are real estate owned. So there's several different phases, different levels of foreclosure, lieutenant street foreclosure, REO. We go after all, as long as there's some kind of legal action filed at the courthouse and it's not taken out of the state of foreclosure regardless of who the responsible party is, regardless of who the foreclosing entity is, whether it's a real estate company or a bank. We seek registration. Now, if a real estate company were to buy it, take it out of foreclosure and rent it out, well, I don't know that we would be able to stay on top of that unless you had a rental registry. That's a different ballack, but.
We do have a rental registry. I was just wondering if you could, in your analysis, tell us when the properties are being sold to, you know, real estate companies or investment groups rather than individual homeowners? Just so that we could follow up with a letter telling them that if they were interested in renting the property, a rental permit is required so that we can get a better hold of our quality of life issues and the properties within the town that are actually being rented out and not owner occupied.
I think the answer to your question lies in the deregistration process. We would be able to give you an accounting every 30 days of what's been deregistered. And we can also probably let you know exactly who got control of the property, who took it out of foreclosure. So if it's an individual, obviously, you know that's not your typical situation like you're talking about rent here.
Right.
If it's a company, you would be able to tell them. And when you have a number like this, you're not talking about thousands, you're talking about hundreds. The number of deregistrations a month would be small enough that you could steer around on those pretty quickly.
Terrific. Thank you.
So any other questions about the snapshot of foreclosure activity we're seeing right now in Riverhead? I can move the map around anywhere you'd like. If you'd like to see a particular neighborhood or something like that.
Anybody interested in seeing a particular?
No, I don't know.
No.
As long as my house isn't there, I'm okay, Kevin.
I think we're okay. You can continue.
Okay, so I'm going to take you over to another side of the database. This is a dashboard I'm launching here as an employee of the town of Babylon. The dashboard is something Riverhead would be able to see publicly. I mean, it's live. It can be kept any point of day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's all cloud-based. This is what a employee of Babylon sees when she first logged into the system. So you see paid periods is the registrations that we've collected so far this calendar year. We've registered 1,989 properties in the town of Babylon. The deregistrations are the ones that we just spoke about, 341 have been deregistered in our program. And then active violations. So there are still 20 active violations right now. 44 came through right now. Those are cases where there's a code violation on a property that's sitting in a state of foreclosure in Babylon. The code enforcement officer went in there and tagged it, but most of them have been resolved so far this calendar year. This month has been a very heavy activity month. In fact, we've been doing this in Babylon since March of 2017. And I think of the month where we've registered almost 700 properties and we still have three days of registrations left, so we probably will break 700. It's strange, you know, there are pockets of foreclosure activity around the country. New Jersey, New York is kind of at the center, Chicago, Southern California. But the state of New York is a very unique state as far as foreclosures go. The foreclosure activity around the country in places like Florida, and we have 200 communities that we're working with, 56 of them are located in Florida. We're seeing foreclosure activity in Florida taper off. I mean, it's not, it's never going to go away, but it's not where it was five or six years ago. New York's not like that. We're actually seeing a heightened level of foreclosure activity in New York, New Jersey as well. Pennsylvania, to a lesser extent, except for Philadelphia. I've said a lot about foreclosures and I want to digress. But what I'm saying is I think you're right from a policy standpoint in exploring something like this. And I hope we get a chance to manage the program for you. But anyway, you can see where these numbers change in Babylon hourly. There's not as many in Riverhead, but they would change daily. We certainly would get registrations every day for your town. And this is just kind of a snapshot of our activity. But there's a lot of bells and whistles on this program. Foreclosure registries are my passion in life. They put most people to sleep. I don't want to do that here this morning.
We won't ask how you got started in this.
What's that?
I said, "We won't ask how you got started in this."
I was an elected official in a municipality in Pennsylvania and I had routinely was receiving phone calls at the height of the foreclosure about homes on a block where they were vacant and the windows were broken or, you know, the lady across the street would call and complain and complain and complain. And finally, I sent the municipal crew out to do the bare basics to the property, which, you know, our solicitor would pull his hair out, said, "You can't do that." So, you know, we implemented this. We kind of set the risk on it. And I don't want to sound like the hair club for men, but it kind of doesn't sound like that. I was once a customer and now I'm no longer an elected official. I won't ever do that to myself again. But I've sold this program all over the country. I've sold 50 of our 200 communities on this program. And it works so well. It truly doesn't cost you anything. We'll train you on how to use it and you'll get checks every month. And most importantly, we will be able to solve blind problems for you at a faster pace. But I've said a lot, and I'm sorry to digress a little bit here. I wanted to go in here just to show you some of our newly registered properties in Babylon. So we color-code our system. All those red dots on the screen that you saw for the map of Riverhead, they would become green and yellow as they're registered. Green means fully compliant. Yellow means we registered it six months ago in Babylon. We're going back to see if it's still sitting in a state of foreclosure. But I'll just take you in here and show you how it works. So if code enforcement officer, Ms. Rizwan, were to get a phone call about this property at 75 Washington Avenue, that there was a problem with it, simply go over here, hit the violation tab. And I know we've told code enforcement officers to be overly descriptive of what's wrong with the program, with the property. Take a picture with your smartphone. You can add it as an attachment. If you are sending a certified letter, don't deviate from that standard operating procedure. Both scan it in and send it through our system as well. So you're, you know, kind of doubling down and letting them know that they've got to get out there and cut the grass. The neighbors are complaining it's a code violation. This is, I don't want to tell you something that isn't true. This is not your ultimate elixir for blight. But I do believe it can be an important tool in your arsenal. It certainly has served Babylon very well and other municipalities all over the country. But that's it. That's my Reader's Digest version of how this works.
You know what? I'm just going to ask Rich Downs, as our code enforcement officer, if you want to come up. And Bob, I don't know, Rich, do you have any questions? I know this is the first time that you, I know you talked about this, but this is the first time you're sort of seeing the presentation on it. Do you have any questions or you think this is something that would be helpful for us?
I think it'd be extremely helpful for us, you know. I missed the beginning part of it. I'm sorry, but.
That's okay. It was actually just talking about identification of the properties and that they would then find out who the entity who was, had ownership of the property in foreclosure and then providing that information so that you can use that as useful information if there is violations on the property. Did I get that correct, Kevin?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So do you have any questions how it would benefit the town or how?
I had a couple of questions, Kevin. This is Bob Kozkiewicz. You and I spoke briefly. Based upon our conversation, I did speak with Joe Wilson from Babylon, who had good things to say. And he kind of reiterated a lot of what you just did in a Reader's Digest version, that you're the administrative party. I was just kind of from a nuts and bolts or a day-to-day type of thing. If we get calls and we determine from going on the dashboard that it's something that's within your registry, do you handle the complaints? Do you handle the follow-up as far as dealing with that? Or is that the code enforcement's job for dealing with, you know, the overgrown grass or the broken windows or whatever it is that's a violation? How does that get, those responsibilities get divided or handled?
Well, let's just say you had a code violation, there's this parcel at 75 Washington Avenue, and you sent a communication to the responsible party through our system, to the violation tab. If they were unresponsive, if there's nothing happened to address the problem, we would handle that. What we would basically do is just go over the property manager and communicate directly with the bank and say, you know, "You've hired someone to maintain this property. They're not doing it. You need to get someone out there to maintain it." And it works very well. And I can tell you, though, we registered, I think, so far this month, 7,000 properties across all of our community partners, almost 200 of them. I can count the amount of times that we've had to go over the responsible party on two hands in the last seven years. It just, the program works well. It's kind of the squeaky wheel gets the grease. So with the initial complaint, the violation, it's on your code enforcement to communicate with the responsible party through our software. Full disclosure, we're managing this registration process from a call center in Florida. So we don't know what's going on at 75 Washington Avenue. We're not out walking the streets. But if it's something that gets addressed, often we want to know. So once you hit that violation tab, a copy of that kind of complaint, that violation goes to us, to you, to the bank, and to the property manager. So all four entities are going to be informed that. Make sure that the Smiths live across the street from 75 Washington Avenue. They say the grass is six feet tall. You've got to get out there and do something to it.
And then the managing entities tend to get back to you and say, you know, "We either set the contractor out there, we mowed the lawn, we repaired the..." Or is that then our code enforcement goes back out and then says that the violation has been mitigated?
They're not always the best communicators. They're not going to let us know when they went out and cut the grass. But you really need to find, what I find is most of these larger entities, which are the vast majority of Riverhead's foreclosures, they're going to hire a company to manage all of the foreclosures in your town once the ordinance is put into place and it becomes an automatic system. They're going to go out and do the bare basics to the property.
Okay.
This works hand-in-hand with New York State with the zombie houses? Is that something completely different or can it be tied in together? Because don't we have legislation through the state to deal with?
We have some grant monies that we got last year for zombie houses. You, I'm not sure if it's hand-in-hand, but it's certainly an additional tool because I would think that some of the zombie houses are those that are in foreclosure.
Right, correct.
Definitely.
And you have, and you.
The zombie program, the grant program is something completely separate. This is kind of just another tool on top of that.
I think part of the zombie program was houses that were in disrepair to be able to address some of those at community level when, if, say, if you didn't have a bank that owned it and there was, and you were, you know, left to do something for it.
A lot of them were bank-owned through the zombie houses, which is.
So Kevin, you'll be happy to know that we just upgraded all of our software for code enforcement and that was done through the zombie grant that we received from the town as well as hiring a town attorney and another code enforcement officer. And we have, as the complaints come in, they automatically go into the system and we can isolate which ones we feel are abandoned homes and that are foreclosures so that we can just give you a complete list on a daily basis or a weekly basis or a monthly basis to let you know which houses we think might be potential foreclosures. And then, you know, you can start your investigations from there. But we're working on getting a workflow program where when these complaints come in, if we feel that it is a foreclosed house or a abandoned house, then we can just add you onto the email and then, you know, we kick it over to you and then you would respond back to us once we get that workflow program in, which I believe is in the works.
That sounds very interesting. Interesting. I'm curious to see if your list would match up with ours. I'm sure it would. But we track, because we're registering so many properties in Suffolk County, we monitor all of the foreclosures that are filed at the county almost on a daily basis.
I was going to ask that question, Kevin. So you answered my next question, which is, you know, how do you monitor it? And how do you track what's in a foreclosure status when it's filed? So you're regularly looking at either the unified court system or the court, the county clerk records to determine when a foreclosure action is commenced?
Correct. In fact, we're on top of. Correct. It was in fact, um, we're, we're on top of, of it from, like I said, six different sources, but all of it's emanating from, from the county courthouse. And since we've been doing this in, in Suffolk County since, uh, March of twenty seventeen, we've got a pretty good rapport with the county. Um, we've really learned how to navigate their, their software, so that we can identify the obligations to register. It's very important to us. It's the only way we make money.
Okay.
And I think also the, the relief on the code enforcement and, and to, to be able to use a service that will, will give them more time to actually go out and look at the violations that are out there and address those. I think that is very helpful.
And Bob, it seems like it will, um, work in conjunction with the blighted property tax surcharge, because if Rich is out there recording and documenting light for this, he's also, correct? Am I correct?
I, I mean, I think it's, it's, it can work together with it, or separately, but it's just another tool. Sure. Yeah.
So, I do have a copy that I distributed to the board of Babylon's code that they adopted, and I've given it to our chair of the code revision committee, and hopefully the code revision committee will be looking at that soon, and will be putting it up for a publish and post and adoption, and then we'll get you started if the board sees fit.
I think Bob has it already in his head for the, for Babylon. You've been speaking-
Well, I, I looked at Babylon's code as, as, yeah, I, I have it as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So, is there any other questions for Kevin? No? All right. Kevin, anything else? Otherwise, I think we're-
Thank you. Enjoy the weather down there.
No, thank you kindly for your time. It was a pleasure speaking with you. I hope we get a chance to, uh, to work for your town.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Always extra hands is always good.
Yep.
I just have a-
When I heard that, I was like, bing, bing, bing.
I don't have a question for Kevin. I just have a question as we-
Where does who come from?
Did we do the RFP this? Did we RFQ this? Did we just find him in the elevators?
This is, this is something that we had talked to, to Bob about. Oh, Bob? Bob?
Is this something which sort of Babylon was-
You're not getting away. No, this is, this is, the company had contacted, um, Bob about, about this product. Um, we had talked about this, Bob. We had talked about whether this has to be RFP'd for-
I think it should be RFP'd.
Yeah.
I, I think that's the right way to do it. Um, I, I am discussing with, with, again, Babylon. He's, uh, amenable to sharing their RFP with us, so we don't have to, we have to wheel.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, they had two companies that responded, one that was out of the country, and one was out of the one that was out of state. So, they went with the one out of state that was still, uh, a United States company, so.
Okay.
And, uh, as I said, their experience has been favorable. He was a little leery of it, but, uh, he's found that the program's been working well, and as they pointed out earlier.
Sounds like a great program.
You get the monthly checks. Just keep going.
All right. Very good. So, we'll put together an RFP for this, and then we'll forward with that.
I'll, I'll reach out to Joe and get that documented from him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have the PSEG presentation. Lisa Alvin and Ernesta? Is it the big check?
I like that.
Yes, probably can. That's all the progress I need to make.
Okay.
Check bounced.
Oh, good one, too.
Thank you. I wrote up a little spreadsheet with, uh, the return on investment. I'll give you my.
No, he has enough.
Yeah.
So, um, can you give a little background about, about a year ago, we sort of tossed this idea of converting one of the buildings over, doing a little pilot study.
And this is through the engineering department?
Yeah. So, um, to convert one of the office buildings in LED lighting from the fluorescent lighting, see how our crews could, how long would it take our crews to do it, um, how much of a financial investment it would be. We went to, uh, do some bidding and ended up throwing the bid out. But long story short, um, we did Town Hall West as a pilot, since we're located there. Um, it worked out pretty well. One of the issues with TSEG program is that you have six months to do it, which seems like a really long time, but things come up, and we wanted to make sure that we could handle it within that timeframe. Um, so our in-house crew, they did this project over the winter. Uh, we converted the entire office part of Town Hall West, as well as the garage and shop area, over to LED lighting. We spent, uh, out of pocket, about thirteen thousand dollars, um, on the fixtures. And we got a check back from PSEG for eighty-one hundred dollars of it.
And could you just, the fixtures have to be changed, because when you change the lighting, they're, they're not, you can't switch, just switch the bulbs over. You need to switch.
You could. There's different ways to do it, um, but the fixtures that we had there were all so old that, um, it's not cost-effective. The fixture like this one, they don't actually make. So, this might be a retro kit that we would do. Um, but for Town Hall West, the fixtures that are there were either old, or it was just not cost-effective to, to retrofit them. The retrofit kits are really expensive. We spent about fifty to sixty dollars on a fixture, and the retrofit kits are more than that, so.
Okay.
So, I'm estimating, uh, without, with excluding town labor, about a year and a half for return on investment.
Very nice.
So, we'll save about four thousand dollars a year. And so, like I said, that was a pilot study for Town Hall West. Um, so, um, I know we spoke the other day. We'd like to take this money and put it back into the same fund and go to another building.
Bill, that, Bill, that was a statement for you.
Um, come to this building, uh, the police department, planning, and, uh, seniors. Get the real low-hanging fruit to start saving some money. Um, yeah.
And how long do you project all of that would take, about?
Probably about a year, from start to finish. Uh, we were doing this with three guys from street lighting. Um, Bill Marco was instrumental in leading, leading his guys to, uh, and guy Wally, in leading their guys to, to get it done. But there's other things that come up, and so that's why I say six months sounds like a really long time. Uh, it probably took us three months to do. Um, we had a little bit of a stop while all of the things-
You're talking two or three hundred fixtures and everything, I believe.
Yeah, this building, um, yeah, there was, uh, we did about a hundred and fifty fixtures at Town Hall West. I mean, we had to rent machines, and we had other work that was done, energy, other energy efficiency work that was done, that we're getting some more rebate money for, um, at the same time. So, we had to coordinate that a little bit, but.
So, then, and then we'll continue to realize the savings year after year after year. I think that's, that's tremendous.
So, we saved, um, I estimate in our bill, we're gonna save about fifteen percent by doing this project. So, that's how much money you save overall. Lighting accounts are about thirty percent of the electric bill, and out of that, you save about sixty percent of it. So, it's a roughly about a fifteen percent overall savings on just one simple-
Change.
Yeah. I mean, we changed already this room over.
Yep.
And what we've been doing is I got a really good price, um, for the fixtures. So, as fixtures die and are not, uh, able to reuse them in other places, in other buildings, we just change them right over.
Right. Very good.
And this coupled with the presentation we had from Johnson Controls, that we, I think we went out the RFP for?
Uh, yeah. That, yes. This, I guess, uh-
This is gonna be a, a sizable savings for the, uh, overall, for the town of Riverhead, which is really great.
And we couple that with some other interesting projects that we'd like to do, like the street lighting outside, which is another big ticket item. Um, I've been in contact. As part of that RFP, we've been working with other contractors to come in and give proposals for that.
Very good. Very good.
Very good job. So, do you wanna present the big, the big check?
Yeah. Just so you know that we got the, um-
Is this the one we have to cash?
Yeah. Go try bringing it to the bank. Um, they're, they're a pretty quick turnaround. I was really surprised on how fast the money came. Um, they came out within a week to do the, to do a preliminary inspection. We do all the work, and then I submit all the documentation, and we paid for it all, that we certified, and we did it all, and in twenty days, the check came in.
Very good.
So, it's pretty quick.
And there is a great program that PSEG is offering for blighted properties within the downtown area and throughout town, that if you buy these buildings and you convert them over to the LED or to cost savings measures, as far as energy efficient, you might be eligible for one of these checks, too. Um, and some of these larger renovations, I know that the Hell House, we have been working very closely with Mr. Petricelli and with Don Thomas in the Community Development Agency Office, where he is applying for some grant money through PSEG and through, uh, other sources to try and bring the utility costs down and the overall carbon footprint, and there's grant money available for that.
Yeah, then they expanded their program. So, this was just for the inside, and now they're, they're working on the outside. So, we'd like to do some of the parking lot lighting as part of the RFP and some other stuff, so.
Okay, very good. Good job, Ernesto.
I didn't see the check yet, bro.
Should we take, should we take a picture with the big check? Take a picture with the big check?
Not do that. Didn't we run into a problem with that last time?
Eighty-one hundred?
With the account number being on the bottom of the check?
Eighty-one oh one.
Yeah, you can, all right. Turn it around. All right, there we go. You know what? Just folded it.
Let's be wise.
There we go.
Job, Tim. Bank account number.
Leave it to it.
Oh, my gosh. It's going green.
Yeah, right. That's a compliment.
Just go a little brighter.
Let me get the back.
Is it my man?
One, two, three.
I should wear dark shirts.
Four, five, six.
Seven, eight, nine.
Honestly, Billy Marcus, Kevin Smith, uh, always should be there.
Thank you, PSEG.
They didn't wanna see their-
And engineering.
They did a lot of the work.
Oh, boy, that was cold standing over there, boy. Was there a vent right up there?
Yes, it is. That's actually, that's a lower vent.
It, it would be, it would be a resolution that we pass, whichever the registration fee is. So, that hasn't been determined yet.
He said normally they charge five hundred, and they take two hundred, and then they give the full.
The town would see like a hundred thousand a year?
Well, it depends, it depends, it depends what the registration fee would be. We haven't, we have the-
That number he threw out there was a hundred.
They, no, the hundred is, is their fee.
No, the hundred thousand. I guess that a hundred thousand.
It, but it would depend, it would depend on what the registrat-, because the registration fee could be two hundred, three hundred, five hundred, so.
So, you don't have this?
He said five hundred is what Babylon is charging.
I don't think he referred that to one town, did he?
Based on our three hundred houses, times three hundred for the registration, would be a hundred thousand, close to a hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Yeah, they keep a hundred, is whatever the registration base. Yeah. Yeah. We like the higher hypotheticals, but, okay. So, now we will move on to resolutions. So, resolution, uh, one is eleven West Main Street Water Capital Project Budget Adjustment.
One second.
Okay, sorry.
You got it?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, two is amends resolution number three. Uh, this was, uh, just another, uh, when we set the salaries again, it was, uh, it was set incorrectly by three hundred.
Dollars, yeah.
So, that will be adjusted.
That's a shame. She just lost three hundred.
Um, uh, resolution three is appoint a part-time homemaker to the seniors program. Uh, resolution four is changes the status of an employee. This is at the, from the call-in to the, uh, part, part-time.
Part-time?
For the receivers' office.
Tax receivers' office, correct. Uh, five is ratifies appointment of a seasonal traffic control officer. Uh, that's five, right?
Yeah.
Six, appoint a water treatment operator to B. Um, we just had somebody that gave notice, so.
Well, no, this is, this is the one that automatically finished his training, and now he's being elevated because he completed training.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry then, yes. Yes. Accepts the resignation of a water treatment plant operator training. Yes. I know. It's, it's- Yeah. It's a difficult, uh, position. Uh, eight is assumes lead agency status pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act for a special permanent site plan application known as fifteen thirty-five Route Fifty-eight LLC, located at fifteen thirty-five Old Country Road, Suffolk County Tap Map, Tax Map Number six hundred one oh one dash two dash twelve point six, Riverhead, New York.
That's the car wash that you can have a sandwich while you're washing your car.
I thought that they, I thought that they abandoned everything, except for just the car wash.
You know, they, that's listed here with seventy-five seats.
I know, but we received a letter.
Is Jeffra-
I think it's wrong.
Yeah, 'cause this was kind of confusing what, what this was and whether it was amended or not. So, we'll, okay.
The car wash right next to a car wash. That's not good planning in my eyes.
I don't think so either.
Well, this is just to assume lead agency for SECA. So, that can all be addressed in SECA, but I don't know if they changed their plans going, going in.
But we did get a letter from the attorney, Mr. Cuddy, saying that they were abandoning the restaurant, and they were only going for the car wash. So, we should be studying just the car wash then under SECA.
That's what they're checking.
Oh, shoot.
This is what came through from them, so.
I want a sandwich. Why does it go to the other car wash?
Nine is authorizes the town clerk to publish and post a notice for public hearing on a special permit application for Jamesport Vineyard Bistro Edition. Uh, this was just something with the posting for that. Uh, ten is authorized in the release of site plan security of new Riverhead Realty Holdings.
Oh, they got their CL, okay?
Yeah. I'm not sure which building this was.
That's down near St. Husky Park.
Okay. Oh, I know it got it. Okay. Awards bid for janitorial supplies. Twelve is first responder vehicle for use by the ambulance district.
What happened to you? You're a little skinny here.
That's twelve. Thirteen is authorized to publish advertisement for traffic signal repair and maintenance for the town of Riverhead.
Do we do that? I thought we did it wrong. I guess we don't?
It depends whether they're green or yellow. And we do one of the colors, but I don't know which ones.
Oh, you mean if the traffic light is green or yellow?
For the light itself. For the, for the, for the actual, we do one color, and then-
I think yellow's county green's ours, no?
Yeah.
I believe you're right. So, paint them all yellow, call it then.
Sometimes they call in Hawkeye if it's off hours, or if they need the big trucks to do it. So, I guess it's just putting it out for bid.
Yeah. Uh, appoint a seasonal recreation aid to the recreation department. Uh, appoint a call-in recreational specialist sports to the recreation department. Appoint a call-in recreational spec- specialist sports to the recreation department. That's sixteen. Seventeen is appoint a call-in assistant recreational leader to the recreational department. Seventeen is appoint a call-in recreational specialist to the recreation department. Nineteen is appoint, uh, ratifies the appointment of a seasonal summer recreation staff to the recreational department. Uh, twenty is appoint a call-in recreational specialist sports to the recreational department. Whoops, it's two there. Appoint a seasonal lifeguard to the recreational department. Appoint a recreational leader to the recreation department. That's twenty-two. Twenty-three is appoint a call-in recreational aid to the recreational department. That's twenty-three. Twenty-four is authorizes placement of a commem- commem-
Commemorative.
Commemorative plaque honoring a resident for exemplary contributions and commitments to the community. And this-
That should be gratifying, right?
Uh, I-
No, we did none proctum.
Or maybe no, no proctum.
None proctum?
Yeah, it's none proctum.
Okay.
By the way, Jim and I went to that. It was really very nice.
So, this will have to be amended for that?
I mean, it was supposed to be none proctum.
Yes.
I tell you, it was, uh, very nice.
She's done a lot.
And the, the rain and the weather stayed perfect for us. It was nice. It was nice.
It was a nice turnout.
They gave a little champagne. It was nice.
It's a ground, unfortunately, but she actually supplied all the paint and the repairs to the gazebo at, outside of the community center, and she's done a lot. She's always stepped, she always stepped up to the plate to help out.
But being there that day, she actually cornered both Catherine and I and said, "Listen, I want that Kubla done, and I want it painted in like a goldish, and I will supply all the paint." So, I think there's some, I have to talk to the engineer. I think there's some structural problems with that Kubla.
There is. Well, while we were honoring her with the resolution, she stopped us and advocated for her next agenda item.
And this is Helen Duray.
She's a real-
Yes, yes, who's honored.
Community advocate.
So, we thank her for everything she's done for the community, and it's nice to be able to honor, to honor her. So, um, Jeff, I'll call you up here for a minute. This is one of the resolutions that we had in question. This is resolution number eight, which is assumes the lead agency. And this is still listed with everything they had originally in their plans. So, do you wanna just explain if those plans have been amended, or?
Um, they have not. They submitted a letter to us from Charles Cuddy. This was for-
The gas station with the-
No, no gas station. Car wash.
Car wash.
Car wash, a restaurant and retail. Uh, this is where the old barn is at Cromer Avenue and fifty-eighth.
Wolf's Bar, sorry.
And.
It's at Pulaski Street and fifty-eighth.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, correct, yep. And it was too much on the property, and the planning board said it was too much, get rid of some of the uses, the town board, uh, some board members chimed in also, said the same thing. Uh, we were leaning towards a recommendation for a positive declaration requiring environmental impact statement because it was just putting too much on the property. Um, the property owner was told that, and they came back, reevaluated, and they're now eliminating the restaurant and the retail and just doing the car wash. They have not submitted revised plans to us yet, but we had the letter from Charles Cuddy indicating that they're going to revise the plans. All this does is that it assumes the agency, it did the letter, nobody wanted it, so all this does is officially designate you as lead agency.
And then they submit an updated plans to us for us to then review?
Correct.
Okay.
So the car wash is the only aspect of the application that requires a special permit from the town board, if I'm not mistaken?
Yep.
And do they meet all the criteria set forth in the special permit?
We haven't seen the revised, revised plans yet, so it'll be interesting to see what they come back with.
Okay, just assuming lead agency.
That's it.
Assuming lead agency, and we might not need a special permit.
It shows good faith in our part that we're moving the application along, so they, they were, they saw the writing on the wall, uh, they, we believe they did the right thing by getting rid of those other uses, there was too many issues with it. Um, so all this does is moves the application along.
So a car wash next to a car wash, down the road from a car wash, down the road from another car wash, so.
In a corner at a very complicated intersection.
Not good planning for what, what I think. Sounds like a, sounds like a. Fifty-eighth street for the town.
You will be, if you adopt this resolution, you'll be the agency and be leader on the whole secret process.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Jeff.
Uses permitted.
All right, that one's right.
Can't tell those again, don't have those home deeps across the street.
No, but they have to meet the criteria of the special permit.
That's right.
And they'll be back again with, you know.
The site plans that they're, that they're looking to put through, and then we'll get to discuss it at that point, decide for secret what it is that we want to have looked at.
Correct. All the other issues still remain out there, water usage, traffic circulation, all the rest of it.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, twenty-five is authorize a sewer district superintendent to attend two thousand eighteen Water Environment Federation Conference. Twenty-six is declares a portion of town property surplus and authorizes town clerk to publish and post a notice for requests for proposals for placement of communication cell towers on town properties, sewer district, yard waste facility, Osborne Avenue Highway Yard, and Wading River Highway Yard. Chapter, uh, chapter twenty-seven. Uh, Resolution twenty-seven approves the chapter two twenty-five application of Church of the Harvest Family Fund Day Saturday, August twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. Uh, twenty-eighth is authorizes the superintendent to execute an amendment to the professional service agreement with Lawrence Levy.
How about you just ask supervisor?
The superintendent.
Oh, sound supervisor, sorry. Well, I don't know if we have more resolutions between Rec or Larry.
Well, Rec I think wins it hands.
Larry, that was for you there.
Well, I have one thing for Rec, they're not all ratifying, which is pretty good, so, there's, there's only one.
Okay. Twenty-nine is authorizes a stipulation in the legal action by the town of Riverhead against Batting Hollow Farms LLC et al., and authorizes the execution of the stipulation by the supervisor. Thirty is, uh, approves participation in a pecconic land trust grant application. Um, they do have some grant money available, uh, to protect properties in the watershed area. I spoke to them, uh, last week, and we're trying to identify some, some properties that we may be able to preserve, so this is just, uh, us approving to, uh, participate in the grant application.
So the properties that you're identifying, you'll be bringing back to the board so the board can decide which ones we would like this grant money applied to?
Well, this is just approved with the participation in the pecconic land trust, the pecconic land trust has actually set out a map of, and are looking at the properties, but we can certainly, uh, offer some properties and it will come back here.
Yeah, probably to the open space committee, I would think.
I would, I mean, because we obviously have a list of priority properties that we would like to see preserved, so before I would sign on to any project.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm sure open space would be involved in it.
Well, this isn't signing on to any product, project at this point, this is just a, that we have participated in the grant application.
Twenty-five, so you're in kind or vacation.
Yes, exactly. Um, thirty-one is authorize town clerk to publish and post a public notice to consider a local law to amend chapter two fifty-one entitled Noise. Is this, oh, I, this is one, this is the bamboo one, we're going to pull this one, um, I.
We're gonna pull this?
Yeah, th- this is, Bob did readdress it, but I think it probably should go back to the, uh.
No, we, um, we just want cooperative, yeah, we want cooperative extension to take a look with us.
A little bit more input before.
We're coming down the home stretch on that.
Okay, so there's been verbiage changing this again?
Um, we changed it up a little bit.
We're gonna keep Johnny Tose.
Um, yeah, what we, what we did was we are only.
Bob, you want to just come up with? Yep.
Based upon the comments that came forward from the last public hearing, um, what we did was we are only banning the planting of running bamboo. And then looking to regulate or confine both running and clumping, so that the clumping can still be planted, that can still be sold. The distinction being that if it's within a distance of a side yard, someone else's property, there's a, there's an obligation to confine it regardless of whether it's clumping or, or running.
Safeguard, right.
So contain it, so that it can't go into the neighboring property.
Right, I think it's, this is the new draft, can I forward this to my farmland committee and let them look at that?
Yeah.
I, I have no problem with you doing it, I'd like as many eyes to see it, before you, everyone feels comfortable going ahead again, yeah.
Third time's a charm.
I actually forwarded it.
And it might, and it might be third and a half or four, but we'll, 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 we'll say.
But you know what, let's just keep working on until we get it.
I just wanted to say I did forward it to someone at the Long Island Horticulture Research and Extension Center and, um, got the okay back from them, but I also forwarded it to someone at Cooperative Extension.
Okay.
And we're gonna, we're gonna get it right.
Good, good.
Uh, thirty-two is approves chapter two fifty-five, application of the Rugged Race LLC, it's a five K obstacle race entitled Rugged Maniac, Saturday, July twenty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Where is that?
That's what I'm just looking at. Calverton Links, yes.
So.
Site plan's done?
This, they have the approval of the, uh, I think they have preliminary approval of their site plan. Um, I think that after, uh, the bounce house last week, they have been notified that they need to come in and fill out chapter two fifty-fives for any events, and then the town board can then decide whether they approve their events or not when they come in.
I believe they got final.
Did they get final?
Approval on the twenty-first, I know that was going up, I, I just don't remember if it, I know the resolution was supposed to be brought up, they planned for agenda last Thursday.
I'm sorry, get.
I have reason to believe they received final conditional site plan approval, there were a number of conditions that needed to be, well, I shouldn't say final condition, final site plan with conditions that need to be addressed before a certificate of documents they can issue.
Are any of the conditions public safety oriented?
Um, the recollection is no, there were more sites specific dealing with separation of wetlands areas and, and, uh, you know, putting all, putting up fence, putting up split ground fence and doing some other things. The, the, and then there was some specific limitations on parking as far as what they could do, because again, part of the problem there was, uh.
There were parking on the entrance road and it would be difficult for ambulance and fire to get in there if there was an emergency.
I think the grant, uh, file site plan approval would limit them to the parking, they have, which is like one hundred ninety-three parking spots, something like that. So anything that exceeds that, again, is going to be something that they're gonna have to come back to the town board to get permission for.
Right.
So if they're doing a rugged range or they're doing something that's going to trigger, uh, you know, greater parking than what their site plan approval grants them, then they're gonna have.
That's why I sort of like, I mean, I, I realize we want, the whole idea is to get them to do a site plan so we know exactly what's going on there.
Right.
We're trying to limit their two fifty-fives because they were really running amok for a while.
Yeah.
But I, I think we all agreed at the time that we would give them a certain number of two fifty-fives, and I like the fact that the two fifty-five at this point, we can put a lot of conditions on as a town board to make sure that we can address those issues prior to site plan.
Right, but as far as, um, the mapping and the proposed parking. You know what, Bob, I'm sorry, Bob, I'm just gonna ask you to come up again, I realize we're dealing with.
I'm gonna be honest, I'm not one hundred percent privy to what was done, so I'm just, this is a little bit on information and belief, so I, I don't, I don't want to be.
Wanting to force more shit.
Anything to be mistaken that this is in concrete and stone, that this is exactly what went down with the planning board, but I understand that the resolution was on last Thursday, and that I believe it was granted, I haven't seen the final.
I haven't seen it, I haven't.
Final resolution, because typically they do send them over, but it takes me a couple days to see them before they come, but I mean, I, I understand he did give final approval. Again, uh, limited to what his application was, which was, uh, disco free frisbee golf, soccer golf.
Right.
Um, paintball, um, Nerf gun, miniature golf. What he sent forth in his original site plan application to the town, because he listed a number of uses that he felt qualified as recreational or sports-related type of uses.
Right. It was like six events or something like that.
Yeah, well, I think the events, you, you know.
I think type of activities it was for.
Certainly when you get into concerts and into festivals and things like that, that's not something that was within the scope of his application. I'm not sure whether he agrees, but, um, I think that's the way the town took the application and treated it.
Yeah, read your letter, it's very well written.
So, in this resolution, it says that the event is on July twenty-first, which is less than a month away, and it says that they are required to give a public gathering, emergency medical services permits. They have to do Suffolk County Department of Health Services for the vendors.
Right.
They have to do, uh, Department of Labor, outdoor public safety plan.
Right.
Training for alcohol.
Tips, yeah, so.
If you look at what the.
Crowd managers for every two hundred and fifty persons.
Are you looking at the resolve?
Yes.
They have already?
Yes.
So it's less than a month away, are they, have they submitted any of these items as of yet, because?
I think they received, they, they, from, I think, you know, that with the big bounce house, I think we've realized that, that the two fifty-five needs to be submitted. They have had scheduled some of these events, I think Bob had communicated with them that they need to come in and get everything done. Um, I think our code is like thirty days, I think there was going to be some.
Thirty or forty, depending upon the size of the event, I think.
This is what?
Forty.
Forty, is it forty for small and sixty for large?
It depends, I think it's more than that for large.
It's one twenty for large, okay.
So it's at the board's discretion whether these want to be granted?
Sure we gotta handle these today, Laura does.
So it's at our discretion.
We have asked them to come put them in for the events that they have scheduled, it's up to us if we want to allow them, to permit them to go forward with these, um, as they come into compliance with the number of days. Obviously, something like this is impossible to come in with at the forty days because of the current date, so.
So, how many have they submitted so far this year for chapter two fifty-fives? I'll get it from Alice Glora, actually, so this is the second one?
This is the second one, bounce, big, big bounce America and, and this one, Rugged Race, they do have, they do have all the things.
You go on line, you have a ton of stuff scheduled.
Bubblepalooza.
To which we've not seen anything on.
Right.
Woodstock two.
And.
It's the one that really jumps out.
I think you submitted the letter to them on what day, just, just.
Yesterday.
Yesterday?
And it was emailed as well.
And it was e- emailed to them yesterday that they needed to come in and for any of these events to file a two fifty-five, so, you know, and then it's at the board's discretion whether to grant them or not grant them, but, um, for the ones that they have scheduled.
But I think that they're using the chapter two fifty-five process to circumvent zoning, and I think that the board needs to figure out a number of events that we are going to permit on the property and let them know ahead of time and make it uniform across the town. Otherwise, you're just gonna see these events popping up all over the place, and we don't even have the police force or the traffic control officers or anybody to be at all these different locations. I mean, Southhold did away with them altogether, so we need to really start looking at how many events these places are having, because they're using the chapter two fifty-five to circumvent the zoning that's permitted on the property.
That's, that's true for all chapters two fifty-fives, anytime somebody files a chapter two fifty-five, that's basically why they're doing it, because their site plan or their zoning or the C O doesn't currently allow them to do that.
Yes.
That's basically why they're doing it.
Right, but. Right, but Riverhead Raceway is restricted by the site plan approval that said that they could be only open so many weekends a year, and they could only have so many events, so, you know, we've been very strict with.
Well, so many races.
But they have the more, the two fifty-fives are the movies, right, when they've had the movies, those are two fifty-five, so they did.
I think it's important that we take a look at that and see how many two fifty-fives we're going to allow on each piece of property throughout the town.
I think that was a conversation that we had a couple of weeks ago, that we do need to review our two fifty-five, uh, applications. Um, I have asked Laura, Laura has been looking through it, she has a lot of suggestions. I think what we had said to try and do this in the throes of making changes, in the throes of, of when a lot of people are putting in for these two fifty-five events was a, a, a difficult task.
And including whether they're gonna be, uh, not have to pay the scheduled fees or, I mean, it was, there's a lot of things that have to be done with this two fifty-five.
Right, exactly. There's a lot, a lot of questions. So Laura has been working on this, and, and we will present, we're presenting, uh, a full package on possible changes to the, to the two fifty-five, but as I said, we have just held off for a couple of, of weeks because we are in the middle of doing our two fifty-fives, and to start making a lot of changes during that time, when it's also when it's Laura's busiest season, who is the most familiar with it, um, becomes a real challenge. So in, in, in being able to have the time to devote for it, we've just put this off till, till later in the season, right after summer, and then we can begin looking at it, uh, more diligently. So if you'd like to address it in a different manner.
A little closer to me on that race, I'm just, I'm curious about the site plan, that was the whole other discussion, you did that site plan.
I'll, I, as I said, I'm fairly certain they received final site plan approval, but, but again, I think they have certain things that they need to do in order to get a C L, so they technically still don't have a C O from, you know.
Well, it's encouraging that they're releasing the process and that just like.
How do they have insurance on the property if they don't have a C O? They're giving us insurance certificates, correct?
They have it, yeah.
Usually, I think the last, uh, insurance certificate that, that I think the big bounce house, I think what they, they are possibly leasing the property to outside agencies that have the insurance that identifies the town.
Okay, so they're not serving food within the building, it's only being served.
I didn't know.
Outside of, in vendors?
I don't know what they put on the application last time, I think it was food vendors on the application.
They had food vendors, I think, at Big Bounce, yeah.
Did they go down to the Big Bounce, Debbie?
You weren't bouncing around?
No, we're bouncing down there this weekend, no way?
Okay, I am intrigued, but first we go.
It needs to be down there, bouncing around.
Thank you.
All right. And thirty-three is adopted amendments to rules and procedures of the Riverhead Community Development Agency for designation of a person, firm, or corporation as a qualified and eligible sponsor pursuant to article fifteen of the general municipal law. Um, this is what we had spoken about before, uh, whether the Q and E requirements, uh, required the, uh, financial, uh, documentation, we had had bill up here saying that they hadn't met the requirements. Um, I believe if, if, you know, it has been requested by some of the board members that they'd like to waive some of that documentation, and because we adopted the rules as part of, of resolution. I am putting forth a amendment that they would have to be, it would have to be waived or, or not needed by resolution.
It's not a matter of waiving it, and you have asked our outside counsel in every single way that you can possibly ask to get the answer that you're looking for, and it has come back every single time that this resolution is not needed. There is no waiver that the town board is making as far as the Community Development Agency requirements. So you, like I said, you've asked five different ways to Sunday, the outside counsel, and they've come back and said, you don't have to do this, and you say, well, I disagree.
And the outside counsel, the outside counsel has also said that it could be done this way, and Bob, I'll ask you to come up and address some of this.
The outside counsel says.
You're getting your exercise today.
The outside counsel says that it can be put in the resolution at the time that we either find them qualified and eligible or unqualified and ineligible. It doesn't have to be done this way, by doing it this way.
Or you can do it this way, they said either way.
It's, it's not a requirement under the C D A rules.
But isn't it better to err on the side of caution?
No, because.
I mean, to do things proper protocol.
No, I, I disagree with this resolution.
My, and, and for, this, I believe is part of the C D A, and as part of the C D A, we passed a resolution, it wasn't too long ago, it was a couple months ago, that the resolution was passed, that this was the qualified and eligible qualifications, and in that, those qualified and eligible ca- uh, uh, qualified and eligible, uh, whatever it is. Stipulations was B, and B required the financials, and so as part of the resolution, so it's, and I'm gonna say that outside counsel said you could do it either or, okay?
No, you're. Reading it wrong.
And Bob is our in-house counsel for the C D A, who, this is, was for the, uh, for the qualified and eligible, which is not whether the particular entity is qualified and eligible, that is a separate conversation than the rules used to determine the qualified and eligible.
I, I think this is a mistake, because the rules as they're set forth right now allows discretion by the board to determine whether or not the app, the information that has been submitted is acceptable to find an applicant qualified and eligible. This is basically saying, I, I mean, it's just contradicting it.
This is saying exactly what you're saying, it says such documentation as it deems appropriate under the particular circumstances of the application before it, which documentation may, but does not have to include. And that's, and that's exactly what you're requesting.
No.
And so by resolution, I think it, we adopted by resolution without that, so I think, because it says demonstrates ability to finance the acquisition and development of specific projects proposed, including the review by the C D A of pro forma financial statements for the proposed project. You've sat up here and said, and Bill, Bill, our financial administrator, has said that they have not provided any of this documentation to us.
The outside counsel has responded to you five times saying that this is not necessary.
They have not responded five times that this is not necessary, they have five, they have, I've read them also, and they have said that you could choose to do it this way, or you could choose not to do it this way.
I have emails.
I am putting through a res- you don't have to vote yes on this resolution, Jody, that is your choice.
Well, do you have three people that support this resolution, like, how does it even end up in the packet?
Well, that's what takes, that's, that's what takes place at a vote at the town board meeting, you can vote no on this if you choose to.
This is, this is the process, and actually, I'm concerned that we didn't receive all the financial documents.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned that this is just another ploy to muck up and delay.
Exactly, and you're changing.
This is, this is, this is.
What is the latest or the ethics pro?
I'm blocking, thank you. Thank you.
Sorry.
This is just another tactic to delay, the way I see it. We have been told time and time again from our town attorneys that how it's set up is proper.
Or not.
Or, no, not or not, that it is proper, and this is proper also.
Correct.
So I don't need to muck it up further and delay things again, I do not support this, um, I fully think what our. Um, I fully think what our attorneys have told us is correct, and I'm willing to stick with that.
But they've told us either or. It's the board's choice.
Right.
So that's why I think it should be put up for a vote.
You're changing the rules in the middle of the process and subjecting the town to litigation by doing so.
Bob, do you feel that that's correct?
I knew this was gonna come around sooner or later. I, I'm very.
I feel the opposite.
Concerned because obviously the town board or CDA board has chosen to have separate counsel work with them on the pending Q and E. And I always feel like I'm being kind of, my office is being kind of wedged in between their advice.
I agree.
I agree.
And, and I'm very uncomfortable going on a path that puts us at odds with outside counsel.
This is a question for the outside counsel.
Yep.
Completely agree.
I, 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 I don't wanna do something that violates the confidentiality of that attorney-client's, uh, prior discussions that have happened between this board and, and your CDA counsel for that particular transaction. So I feel that talking about that or somehow getting us too far afield may.
Correct.
Vitiate that attorney-client privilege. If it's something you wanna talk about in an executive session as far as what the legalities are. Open session, I think we're getting tenuously down the road where we're, we're possibly getting into a problem with, with destroying the attorney-client privilege.
But this is. Okay.
The board can choose to go. As, as I think I've said to you individually, you can choose to go this path or, or, or not. I think that there's certainly enough that can be, um, put forth as per counsel's letter to the board as to justify going either direction. I don't think it mandates one direction or the other. Uh, but again, I, I'm leery of getting too far out on a limb and, and somehow messing up that attorney-client privilege.
So in your recommendation, then, would you suggest that the board to go through a vote? Because there, there obviously is differing thoughts on this. So I think that's the process to vote on the, vote on it.
I think that's a question for outside counsel that is going to be representing us with litigation.
I think outside counsel should be.
Can I just say, can I, but, but Bob is the attorney for the CDA. This is the, this is the qualified and eligible qualifications. This has nothing to do. If you take this contract out of that, this has nothing to do with that particular contract. This has to do with the, with the, sort of the rules of the game of the actual hearing itself. It has nothing to do with the contract.
And you're changing the rules of the game in the middle of the game, which is going to subject the town to litigation one way or another.
As everything to do with the contract.
And I think. I do not see it that way.
What about letting Bob answer? He's starting to answer.
Good, sorry.
I, I, I think it's very difficult to recommend that you take one action as opposed to the other. Uh, again, um, the advice that counsel has provided to the CDA board pursuant to request from the CDA board for an opinion has been, I think, of record. I, I, I think that anything that's possibly affecting that, again, is, is, is bad form. Um, I, if, if there's three votes to go ahead, uh, I don't see a harm if there's not. Again, I don't see a harm with not going forward. So, I mean, that, that's, that's my opinion. I, I, I think that, again, uh, much of this is subject to interpretation. Much of it's going back in the record in determining intent. Um, I know there's been some discussion while the town attorney's office prepared the document, therefore it's the town attorney's intent, but I'm, I'm not policymaker. You guys are the policymakers. So it was really your intent of what you wanted the CDA rules and regulations to be. If the record's silent, then it's subject to interpretation.
Well, I, I, I can, I can tell you this, just looking at it, and I, I try to take everything in before I just, I, I find, I understand where this is coming from. I, I just think what the catalyst for this was, was the fact that some thought that the, the financial records and the pro forma and the certified public corporate financials that weren't officially given to us, uh, was a problem. Of course, when you're dealing with a private company, those aren't available. It's not like an entity. So, I think timing's everything, and I think that since that was really the impetus for, all right, let's change B to be a little more inclusive, so it's not a automatic, you're out of the game, I get. I just think timing's everything, and I think that we're in the middle of a Q and E now, and we're just waiting for this ethic things to come through so we can finally move this town forward one way or the other. Um, so I, I don't think, I don't think now is a good time to even address this. If you wanna, if you wanna close this what you perceive as a loophole, then maybe that's something we should do when we're out of this Q and E process and not at this time. That's, that's just my feelings.
But I believe the original one might have been adopted during the contract period. The change, the change, I think, I think.
The original, the original went back to two thousand five, two thousand six.
Right, but then, but then I believe that it was changed.
The only thing was you didn't have that RDC.
But I think, I think in six, six of two thousand seventeen, after the letter of intent was already signed, you did change the Q and E.
There was no agreement of sale.
But.
That was Denise's law.
You already had the, you already, I, I, I'm just saying, Jim, if that is your, if that's your reasoning, on, on six sixteen, two thousand seventeen, you did change, you adopted an amendment to the rules and procedures of the Riverhead Community Development Agency of the designation of a person, firm, or corporation as a qualified and eligible pursuant to article fifteen of general municipal law. You changed that after the letter of intent was already signed.
I believe.
And you were in the middle of the negotiating of that.
I believe, if you could just slow it out a little, I feel like I'm talking to my wife. She won't let me get a word in edgewise.
Well, I wanted to finish before you.
Sorry, I believe that that amendment that was done last year or two years ago was because there was a, a procedure in there which called for the Riverhead Development Corps, um, which didn't exist anymore. And that had to be taken out of the law, and I think it was Denise Civalletti from Riverhead Local that pointed that out procedurally, that there was still a procedure involved with RDC, it just wasn't there. So that was an amendment to correct that flaw in that. There, there was nothing else added or subtracted in that other than to remove the RDC and replace that with, I believe, the CDA or whatever it was at the time.
But you voted on it. You voted on the change, but your argument was right now is that you can vote on a change in this because we're, we're in the middle of, of, of a sale, and this is still in the same time.
No, I, I'm saying I find it suspect that, that because the impetus for putting this particular thing in there is, is because there's questions about whether we actually receive financial statements or not.
I think the impetus to put this in here is to protect the town so that if you don't require all of those documents, that you have the ability not to require all of those documents. I think the timing is very appropriate because we're not making a decision at this meeting. It's coming prior to the, to us calling for a vote amongst the board. And I think it's, it's, this is the time that you would do it, not when you're in the middle of, where you have a date set to make the determination.
I, I disagree.
And we'll have to agree to disagree on it.
I think anything.
Well, that's why it should be put up for a vote. That's my point. That's.
But I wanna make, but I wanna make a point on something, um, to the comment that was made that this is to delay things. Um, Jim makes the point that we haven't received an ethics decision yet. We have not received the ethics decision, so this would not be delaying that, and, and frankly, that's what's holding us up. So this is not a delay, this is not a delay tactic.
You're changing the rules in the middle of the game by changing any legislation that has to do with the CDA in the middle of a well-financed role prior to a decision.
The rules were set by you guys. Set the rules.
Well, before my time, Catherine.
Right, so it, it wasn't when I was here. The rules were not made when I was here, so.
Well, the rules were made when you were here. You ratified them on six, six, two thousand seventeen.
I was still arresting people when they stood with it.
Okay, so I.
Now, you keep going back to that. That's just about removing the RDC. That's all that was.
I disagree.
No, it was reaffirming. It was, it was reaffirm.
That's not changing the rules. It's taking something out that didn't exist. That's all that was, period.
It, you took out the, you took out the vetting process, and you reaffirmed what was on the books.
Did not take out the vetting process.
You, RDC was charged with vetting applicants when they came in.
And it didn't exist anymore. It needed to be removed. That's not changing the process. That's removing something that didn't exist. It made absolutely no sense to have that in there. It was invalid by having that in there.
Well, I certainly don't think it hurts for us to vote on this.
You certainly could have reconvened the committee.
I think it should be pulled out of the packet.
And people can decide whether they're comfortable or not having, not having the, um, financial documents. Personally, I'm not.
Well, my understanding, and, and I'll tell you why I feel this way, is that pro forma is a standard that publicly traded companies use to show their financial wherewithal, for lack of a better word. CAT obviously is not a publicly traded company. It is a private company, and the rules are different for them, as, has been explained by our outside counsel in dealing with this. And when you called Mr. Rothar up here to say that they didn't present pro forma, I don't think anybody's gonna argue that. They didn't.
I think.
But they're not required to.
Yes.
No, they're not. It's based on, if you go back to what our outside counsel said, and based on proceedings that had happened prior, which is what you're gonna base your decisions on. This is totally allowed and totally legit and totally legal. This, to me, is just throwing another cog in the works.
It's grandstanding.
That's not needed because we are perfectly within our rights legally to do as has been done in the past. And that's what our attorneys that we hired to help us through this have told us.
But I think that Bob has said this several times now, that it, it is subject to the board. It's a, it's a subjective opinion, and it's the board's choice to make that opinion. If it's not based on.
I don't disagree.
So, and that's why I think it gets put, put up for vote.
I don't disagree with that, that it's a subjective opinion.
And, and I have to say that for, for, for Mr. Rothar who came up here, you know, he is our financial administrator. We asked him if they have complied with the financials that are on there.
They did not comply with pro forma. Nobody here is gonna argue that.
Mr. Rothar, could I ask you to come up again?
He's, he's just gonna reiterate what you just said. This is ridiculous.
No, I am, I.
All right, so put it up for a vote. He's gonna vote, and now you don't have the support.
I am asking, I am clarifying what a pro forma statement is. Could you please explain what a pro forma statement is?
In this case, a pro forma statement would be the, um, projection of the company and how much money they're gonna spend, how to, much time it's gonna take, um, to do what they say they're going to do with the property. A going-forward statement.
Right, right, exactly. So it's back, so you the build-out and the development plan is the million square feet of build-out and the runway. So that would, what would have to be a charge in the pro forma statement, how they were going to finance that, and the build-out. And that was not in the r- information we received?
That was not in any, any information that I received.
Okay, thank you.
We did receive several documentation, that's a part of the record, that says how, what money they have, what banks they own, what money's been allocated for this project, what they expect to do once they get their approvals, which they can't even, they're not even investing a dime in this property until they know that they have control of the property. And then they will go and start talking to the DEC and to the Health Department and to the Planning Department and to all the other entities that are involved to figure out the best place to put this million square feet. They don't know how much it's gonna cost until they know where it's going.
When they sign, when they signed on to the agreement, to the definitive agreement in principle, they signed on to being able to say that they could perform the obligations men in the intended development plan. But this is, this is, we don't have to agree on this stuff. This is the conversation we have, and this is what we take by votes.
Right, and if you don't have three votes, normally it doesn't go, put in the packet.
Okay, so. I don't know that we have three votes or not have three votes. We'll have to see that at the meeting.
We'll vote on it.
All right.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. All right, now that's, you're done with your exercise. Up and down.
Oh, wait, one more time, Bob.
You know what? I can't find my, uh, thing to go into, uh, executive. Do you have the agenda? Yes, please, thank you. Okay, can I get a first and second to go into executive session, uh, for matters leading to the promotion of an employee, matters leading to the hiring of an employee, matters leading to the promotion of an employee.
Negative, negative.
And litigation, pending litigation in the matter of the County of Suffolk and County of Suffolk Controller versus Town of Babylon et al. First and second?
With a forty-five second bathroom break.
I'll move that we go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right, so carry.